The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldt. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Florida. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Bishop Wooton from Williams Temple.
May we bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for this day because only you can make a day. And this is the day the Lord has made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And Lord, we come before you asking your favor and your blessing upon the city of St. Louis, the mayor, and each alderman and all the woman and all those leaders of this great city. Bless the people that reside here. Bless the community. Bless each and every one under the sound of my voice. And may the grace of God be with us all as I pray in the name of Jesus for their families, for their loved ones. Send forth prosperity. Send forth blessing. And I decree it in your mighty name, Lord. Amen. Amen. And I want to thank the city of St. Louis for welcoming our 104th Holy Convocation of the Church of God in Christ. We were in Memphis, Tennessee for 102 years. And last year, we had our convention here, the 103rd Holy Convocation. And we positively impacted the city with over $35 million in revenue. And we back again, and it will be more because the saints heard how great the reception was here in St. Louis. And I think we'll multiply that number on this year because there are more saints coming. And I've been telling them the best is in the Midwest and the best is right here in St. Louis. So I applaud you and thank God for you, all these great men and women of St. Louis, and our president of the Board of Aldermen, President Reed. God bless.
I want to thank Bishop Wooton for really working to make sure that that convention comes to the city of St. Louis. We really need that. And I can't thank him enough. And also thank him for the prayers today. Back to our regular order of business. Alderman.
Mr. President, members of the board. It's my honor today to introduce, if you would welcome them as our special guests, Demetrius Alfred as Union Representative of Firefighters Local 73, and also Tim Ogle from Congressman Carneyhan's office this morning.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take up our special order of business. I move for adoption our Courtesy Resolution Calendar in ten seconds. Second about Alderman from the 20th. Alderman from the 8th. Would you like to approach the dais? And Alderman from the 4th coming?
Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution Number 244 for...
You can read it.
Okay. I'll read Resolution Number 244. It gives Alderman Moore and I great pleasure, though, to be here today because De La Salle Middle School, which is a school in his ward, is celebrating its 10th anniversary this year. Whereas De La Salle Middle School was founded in 2001 and is committed to making a positive impact on the city by providing an affordable and empowering middle school education, including an extended school day, year-round academic calendar, and a graduate support program that offers daily study halls, social guidance, and college preparation. And whereas De La Salle Middle School is located at 4145 Kennel Lee Avenue in the Ville neighborhood of North St. Louis and currently serves 63, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade girls and boys, and there are 112 graduates who live in the greater Ville and surrounding neighborhoods in North St. Louis. And whereas the high school graduation rate is 96 percent. And where 77 percent of the De La Salle Middle School graduates go on to college, either two- or four-year colleges. And whereas 2012 marks an important milestone with the first class of De La Salle Middle School alumni, as they will be celebrating their graduation from college. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate and recognize the 10-year anniversary of De La Salle Middle School. And we further instruct the clerk of this board to spread a commemorative copy across the minutes of these proceedings to the end, that it may be presented to our honorees at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth day of November 2011, Honorable Sam Moore, Alderman 4th Ward. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. I know you're wondering why we have the 8th Ward doing 4th Ward business, but Steve has been with... Alderman Conway has been with the De La Salle School, which is a jewel in the 4th Ward. And they're one of our proud products. They're doing an absolute great job in this renaissance of returning this community back to its grandeur, and they are a great part of that renaissance. So we thank Alderman Conway for... He actually came up with it, and he gave me the honor of being part of this program since it was in my ward, and this is protocol, so we appreciate that. And with that, I'd say we have a total admiration and respect for the school and the graduates of De La Salle School in the 4th Ward in the Ville. Thank you very much.
And Principal Phil Pusiteri is going to introduce a speaker from the school.
Thanks. Thank you, Alderman Conway and Alderman Moore, for having us today. Thank you for letting us accept this honor. Education can make dreams come true. And to share her story of how education may be helping her reach her dreams, we invited 8th grader Micah Lee to share her story.
Good morning. My name is Micah Lee, and I am an 8th grader at De La Salle Middle School. Two years ago, my teacher entered me into a summer essay contest for Walmart entitled, "How School Helps Achieve My Dreams." Because my school is extended into the summer, I just thought of it as a normal writing essay for a grade. I guessed I knew there was a prize, but I wasn't banking on winning. I just knew I had the turn-in assignment for class. So I began thinking, what is my dream? Then I remembered a movie I had seen and thought my dream is to go to Barcelona. Here's my winning essay for the contest. "How School Helps Achieve My Dreams." Will my dreams ever come true to go to Barcelona, Spain? One day, I was on the Internet looking around the world at beautiful places and just happened to click on Barcelona. Remind you, I was only seven when I saw these pictures. I was picturing myself really there. From that day forward, I've been looking at movies and doing research and everything about Barcelona. My teacher, Mrs. Alvater, told me in high school there are some programs that take you to Barcelona. So I have to do well in school and receive good grades so my dreams can come true. A month later, I received a call from school. For a second, I thought I had did something wrong, but it turned out I had won the essay contest. My mom took me to Walmart and I went on a $100 shopping spree. Now, two years later, I still think about my dreams of going to Barcelona. But first, I have to get into high school and make the grades. School and especially support of small classes at De La Salle inspired me to achieve my dreams to be whatever my heart desires. Yes, someday I will visit Barcelona, but my true dream is to receive an education and become a sports therapist. Thank you.
Thanks again to the Board of Aldermen for the honor today. De La Salle Middle School serves in our neighborhood in the 4th Ward, and I know each of you care deeply about education of students in your own neighborhoods. And close to all of our hearts is the success of students in St. Louis City through education. I want to share briefly what De La Salle does to help us effectively reach our students. With our Extended School Day, students are here from 7:30 to 5:30. Extended Year, students are in August through into July. Small class sizes, 9 to 15 students. We continue to give support to our high school students and graduates financially, academically, and socially, up to $2,000 per year for our high school students in private schools. We see a lot of academic growth among our students in high school on math, reading, and language. We really also, as a Catholic school, work to develop the whole child. Only three of our students are Catholic, but we still work to develop spiritual well-being, emotional health, physical health, as well as kind of social skills. And we're rooted in service in the Ville neighborhood. We collaborate with a number of other organizations in the Ville neighborhood, including Homer G. Phillips Senior Living, the Tandy Center, Community Garden. We've been in the business for 10 years, serving students in the Ville, and we want to thank you for the special honor today. Thank you very much.
While they're setting up, I'm going to offer my thanks also. I think that, you know, with all the challenges we have in the city of St. Louis, and every day we hear about how we're failing at educating children, and then you hear about good programs like De La Salle, and we find that there are a lot of good things going on within the boundaries of our city as it relates to education. And this school is one of the great ones in the city of St. Louis. Let's give them another round of applause for doing such a great job. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved in second that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction, round of guests. Any introduction, round of guests. Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce here today Mr. Darryl G. Smith, who is the Vice President for Marketing with the Africa Channel. He's here to our left. Mr. Smith.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce as my honor guest today, the former Comptroller, Vervis Jones. Thank you.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my guests today, from the plumbers and pipe fitters, Michael Loughlin, Dick Kellett, Don Summer, and David Holmes.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I'd like to have my special guest, Demetrius Alfred, from the Firefighters Locals.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th. I'd like to wrap us up.
Pardon me, there's a major conference back there. Everything happens around the 28th Ward.
Hopefully it's productive.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here on the fourth day of November, let everyone know that this is King Tut Day. It was on this day, November 4th, 1922, when they discovered King Tut's tomb. I am proud to have with me the man on that expedition who led it, Mr. Fred Steffen.
Alderman from the 13th. You recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes until of the October 21st meeting.
Move by Alderman from 13. I maintain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report to city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With dispensal line item 7, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move for third reading of Board Bill 51 and final passage.
Move by Alderman from the 18th. Second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion, Alderman? It's been moved in second that we third read and final pass. Board Bill Number 51. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. I didn't hear you vote. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldt. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Alderman Villa. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-five aye votes.
Aye vote. Stay in the motion from Alderman from the 18th and third read and finally pass. Board Bill Number 51. Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off any of our formal calendars? With dispensal line item 10, first reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 204, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3610 Palm containing a severability clause. Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3322 through 24 Cherokee containing a severability clause. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3321 Cherokee containing a severability clause. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2845 Victor containing a severability clause. Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplet, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2200 through 16 Washington containing a severability clause. Board Bill 209, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3339 Missouri containing a severability clause. Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Bremen Homes redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 211, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 212, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance repealing ordinance 68182 affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement between the city and Lancaster Ventures LTD containing a severability clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance repealing ordinance 68188 recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $4,227,000 plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for the chemical building redevelopment project containing a severability clause. Board Bill 214, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance recommended by the City Planning Commission pertaining to fees related to services provided by the zoning section of the Building Division of the Department of Public Safety, repealing and amending portions of Section 21 of Ordinance 59979, including a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 215, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from J Industrial District and K Unrestricted District to J Industrial District only in City Block 936 for property at 2219 through 33 Delmark containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move for suspension of our rules so that I might introduce a board bill for first reading calendar today.
Move by Alderman from the 7th. Second by Alderman from the 22nd. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldt. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderman Rhodey. Your aye. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-two aye votes, one no vote, one abstain.
Madam Clerk, please sign. Board Bill Number 216 to HUGS.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, and 210. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 211, 212, 213, 214, 215, and 216. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Madam Clerk, please sign. Board Bill Number 208 to HUGS.
So noted.
Second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill 169, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance recommended by the City Planning Commission pertaining to the procedures for the initiation of change and requirements of the notice of proposed change in the zoning code, repealing sections... Portions of Sections 24 of Ordinance 59979, and enacting a new thereof new sections pertaining to the same subject matter containing a severability and an emergency clause. The following Board Bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill 141, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $13,727,769 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 174, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into a second memorandum of agreement between the city and the Bi-State Development Agency of the Missouri Illinois Metropolitan District, authorizing the issuance of City Department of Streets permits, which provide the agency mooring privileges containing a severability clause. Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment ratifying and adopting the actions of the mayor and the comptroller in accepting and executing certain grant agreement for maximum federal obligation of $7,318,112 for reimbursement of direct costs associated with the reconstruction of Taxiway Delta Phase 2 and Taxiway Echo Phase 2 containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 184, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a fuel system lease and use agreement with the 20-year term between the city and STL Fuel Company LLC containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert St. Louis Airport luggage and cart rental concession agreement, AL 148, between the city and Flight Services and Systems Doing Business as Easy Cart containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispensal line items 14 and 15, Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 189, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Rhodey, Vaccaro, Moore, Bosley, Carter, Conway, Young, Arnoldt, Florida, Behringer, Schmidt, Cohn, Boyd, Williamson, Ogilvy, Troop, Flowers, Davis, and Carter. In ordinance relating to Forest Park, recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, providing for the execution and delivery of a 2011 supplemental maintenance cooperation agreement between the city and Forest Park forever with an emergency provision.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 189.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would ask that if the chair would put Board Bill 189 in the informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number 189 to the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Alderman Rhodey, President Reed, Alderwoman Cruzen, Alderman Vaccaro, Moore, Bosley, Conway, Young, Arnoldt, Florida, Behringer, Schmidt, Boyd, Cohn, Williamson, Ogilvy, Troop, Flowers, Davis, and Carter. In ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the comptroller to issue various requests for a proposal to secure bond counsel, financial advisors, underwriters, underwriters' counsel, and any other professional services necessary to prepare documents related to issuing and to issue the bonds containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 190.
Mr. President, if you could put that on the informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please sign. Board Bill Number 190 to the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
We do have a few other guests here with us today. I don't know if any of you knew Dustin. I'm assuming he's still in St. Louis, but not... Maybe he's in Chicago. But Dustin is here today, and he has with him a whole group of teens from... And kids, and I'm assuming teens from Chicago. And they're from the kids off the block in Chicago. We also have with us Diane Lattaker. Is that correct, Lattaker? She's a nominee for a... She's a nominee for a CNN Top Teen Hero Award for two thousand and eleven, so let's give them a round of applause. Can you guys stand up so we can, stand up so we can welcome them?[1583.03][1583.03](applause) And welcome to St. Louis. We're hoping that you have a good trip while you're here, and hopefully you can meet with a lot of people and we can find out some of the things that you guys are working on in Chicago and transfer some of those ideas to St. Louis. So if you guys get an opportunity to, please have, please spend some time with this group over here today. All right, you're welcome. We will dispense with line items seventeen and eighteen and nineteen.
Board Bill Fifty-One.
Board Bill Fifty-One. Where is it? Report of enrollment.
Board Bill Fifty-One.
All other business being suspended. The president's y'all in open session. Let's fix this signature. Here to, to the end that these may become law.[1637.12][1637.12](pause) Dispense with line items twenty-one and twenty-two. Ms. Lance, unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday Ways and Means Committee meeting at nine a.m. in the leisure room. Thursday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's Thursday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. Friday, the offices closed for veterans day. There will be no meeting. The offices closed on Friday. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I want to announce two honored guests of mine this morning. Captain A. Pruitt with the St. Louis Fire Department.[1697.35][1697.35](applause) And a very special and warm welcome today because it's his birthday, Leroy Grant with
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the third and twenty-seventh wards due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second about Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m. on eleven.[1746.62][1746.62](pause) Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Thursday, ten a.m., November tenth.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second about Alderman from the twelfth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, we stand to turn.